City Commission meeting for February 10th will come to order, please. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Would you please do the invocation for us?
I will do it.
Thank you so much. And our pledge of allegiance tonight is Bronte Green, and he's a student at Paducah Tillman High School. And we will do the pledge right after we have the invocation.
Father, we charge you to heaven, we thank you so much for today. We thank you so much for the opportunity that you continually give us to advance your kingdom. That kingdom's character is love and patience, long-suffering, not judging, but embracing. Father, we look forward to relationships we build as we serve in this capacity. Let us leave this place with confidence that we have represented you well. These things we ask in your shoes' name. Amen.
Amen.
Bronte?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Come back again, please. I mean, come back and help us again.
You're supposed to read a poem.
Oh, you're going to read a poem? Okay, please.
This poem is called "With the Lark" by Paul Lawrence Dunbar. Night is for sorrow and dawn is for joy, chasing the troubles that fret and annoy. Darkness for sighing and daylight for song, cheery and chaste, the stream heartfelt and strong. All the night through, though I moan in the dark, I wake in the morning to sing with the lark. Deep in the midnight, the rain weeps the leaves, softly and sadly, the wood spirit grieves. But when the first hue of dawn hits tense the sky, I shall shake off my wings like the birds and be dry. And though, like raindrops, I grieve through the dark, I shall wake in the morning to sing with the lark. On the high hills of heaven, somewhere to be, where the rain shall not grieve though the leaves of the tree. There my heart will be glad, for the pain I have known, for my hand will be collapsed in the hand of mine own. And though life has been hard, and death's pathway been dark, I shall wake in the morning and sing with the lark. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you so much.
And please do come back again. Do we have any additions or deletions, City Manager?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce Cindy Sharp, and she's doing a presentation for us tonight. February is National Heart Month in recognition of the fact that so many people, I think actually more people die from heart disease than from cancer. And Cindy has an initiative at Clark School to raise awareness for the healthy heart. So if you'd come up, Cindy, and talk a little bit about, please?
I'm only used to talking in front of small children, so. This is Clark's 30th year to participate in Jump Rope for Heart, which is, oh, good, you made it, which is a fundraiser for the American Heart Association. Jan Godwin, the PE teacher prior to me, started it in 1985, and this is only my second year as the PE teacher and coordinator of this program. But in our 29 years, the Clark students have raised, are you ready for this, $168,678. Pretty impressive. Last year, we raised $7,000, so we're hoping to raise a little bit more this year. I brought two students to tell you how they raised money. This is Sam Stuber, and he raised money online. Do you want to tell us anything about that and how much he raised?
Would Sam like to come up on the podium, so?
Would you rather go up there or you want to stay here?
I can only see the top of your head.
There you go.
Tell you what, why don't you have a seat right there? All right, sitting right here next to me, get comfortable. Mic you up. There you go.
$150 online.
He's raised $150 online, which is the highest of any student.
Good job.
So are you still taking donations?
Yes.
Are you? So you would just go online and type your name in? How do we do that?
How do we give you money?
You know the address off the top of your head. It's like heart.org or something.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So we have about 30 students that have registered online, and so that's, you know, in this new age of technology, new to me. So he had raised the most online, and so we brought him. And then Alexandria, do you want to?
Slide up, let her come in here. There you go.
This is Alexandria Copper, and she's turned in an impressive amount also. She didn't do hers online, and that's fine.
I raised $165.
You want to tell them how you did that?
Well, I let my dad take it to work, and he kind of told people how, well, what the money was for, and it got him more interested in giving the money.
Wonderful.
She has, yeah, several stu-, you know, a lot of people, and I tell the kids, you know, any amount is good, and she got it all added up to 165.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, so far this year, we're a little over 5,000, so we're hoping to get to 7,500 this year. And we also have my principal here, Steve Evers-Abell, who's also very supportive of the program. Do you want to add anything to that?
So you have to the end of February?
Well, we're jumping this week, the week before Valentine's, and, but I'll let them turn in money again next week through, we really, it started in January. And they have, and I thought maybe the kids would wear their little ducks, and that has really amped up, I think Sam's mom can justify, the initiative. You know, if you turn in five, you get this duck. If you turn in 35, you get another duck. And who wouldn't want the ducks, I mean, on a lanyard? So that has really helped, right, Sam?
I didn't know that Mark Thompson was helping you with that.
What?
I didn't know that Mark Thompson was helping you with that.
They also get thank you gifts, like the shirt that I have on, and jump ropes and other prizes, thank you gifts they get for their efforts. So they'll be getting lots of thank you gifts.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks, Steve. Going on into our meeting, Commissioner Abraham, the minutes, please.
Okay. Madam Mayor, whoa, one step. I move that the reading of the minutes for January 27th, 2015, and February 3rd, 2015, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And tonight, we have with us the new General Manager of Paducah Power System and the Chairman of the Board, Hardy Roberts. And so I won't make you sit through the whole meeting, Gary, I promise. So I'd like to introduce you, if you'd like to come up, and Hardy, if you'd like to introduce Gary.
Madam Mayor, sisters, fellow citizens, it's an absolute honor for me to present Gary Zing. Gary Zing comes to us from Lubbock, Texas. He was born in northeastern China, close to the North Korean border. He got his, earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Electrical Engineering from a university in China, a Master of Science in Electrical Engineering, a Master of Science in Computer Engineering, and a PhD in Electrical Engineering, all from University of Southern California. You were, you got into consulting in California a little bit, didn't you? And that got him into the public power situation, and that got him into Lubbock, Texas, where he was President and CEO from 2005 until July of last year. Gary had numerous management and senior management positions in there within the utility, including Chief Operating Officer, Management of TND, I think it's Transmission and Distribution. See, I'm learning this electric stuff. Manager of Electrical Engineering. LPNL was a department of the city of Lubbock, and it was near bankruptcy in 2003. The charter election took place in 2004 to separate LPNL from the city. The motion passed with 83% of the voters, and an independent electric utility board was created. Gary was appointed as the Chief Operating Officer and then the Chief Executive Officer. He reported to the Independent Electric Board. Under Gary's leadership, LPNL turned around financially. The Utilities Board rate, bond rating was raised. Their cash reserve went from $26,000 to over $1 million. LPNL had their own internal generation with a peak load of 625 megawatts. Half of Gary's time during his last four years has been spent in power supply and management. He managed the process of seeking and evaluating power supply alternatives, selling their generation to XL, which is a large, large Texas distributorite, and purchasing low-cost power from the open market. He managed LPNL's power sales and power purchase contracts and lead contract negotiations. We're very lucky to have Gary with us. I'd like you to welcome Gary Zing.
Thank you. Gary.
Well, I really appreciate that Mayor and the Commissioner have the chance to hope and make some difference. And I believe, you know, we have a lot of good employee work for PPS. They've done a lot of good things for this community before, and we had some difficult situation right now. I believe we work together, we're going to overcome that. And I know it's tough, it's hard, and also I know it's worth paying for, for some of our low-income rate payer and the community too. But we recognize that, we understand it, but the part is important is we work on that issue, solve that as soon as we can. Only thing, I guess I can promise, or we promise, is working as hard as we can and report back to this committee as soon as we can. And also, I like to have a chance, ask Mayor and the Commissioner continue to help us to the program, like a roundup program or project help hand, you know, in our way, we can continue to help the people really need help. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything to say to Gary?
Well, just that, you know, it's not much of a honeymoon phase for you coming in. I'm glad the comments that you made about the obvious concerns, low-income business owners, opening the power bill and see that the rates are what they are. Reading your, reading and then hearing again your resume and some of the things that you've been able to do with the previous stops is encouraging. The plan that was put in place prior to you getting here, we're all hoping that that plan works, and you're the head coach of this thing, so making the right moves and putting people where they need to be, looking over just everything and moving, moving this community to a place where maybe we can pop the champagne bottle and celebrate some things, so, but that's still out there. I'm glad you're here. So anything that, I know I speak for myself and this other, and the rest of the Commission that we can do to help you with that, please don't hesitate.
I really appreciate that we might, because I would say we use everything we can, we need all the help we can, include the Commissioner and Mayor, because the political confer-, I mean, the influence you have can indirectly, indirectly help us too. And I'm saying is when we need it, I think even near future, we're going to sit down and talk to Mayor and you all, try to figure out a plan somehow you can help us, I'm pretty sure of that, including talk to some of the federal agency, whatever else. And it's difficult, I know that, it's tough, and we certainly don't want to stay as one in the highest rate, because the level paralysed was the lowest rate in Texas. That's the part we like to stay.
That's the part we like to get back to.
But it's not going to be very easy.
Right.
That's also true. But the only thing we can promise is we tried all the possibility, I want you to know that. We're going to work hard, we're going to find out, even something remotely, you know, we think it's not a much chance, but we got to try. What happened in Lubbock, 2004, we did is, in the north of our seventh state, we visited every one of the power supplier, talked each one of them to looking for a solution. Take us a year and a half, finally have the solution, you know, make us a foundation for next 15 year, we had the lowest rate, and we built up $100 million cash in five years, everybody happy in our perspective. And we, you know, with the support of the Board and the Commission and the citizen, I think we have a chance, we got to try.
All right.
It simply says, community-owned corporation, the best interest for all the, we are in here, we got to try the best.
Well, let's help this guy.
Yeah, we will.
I mean, okay.
We will.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
All right.
As a personal note, and as Jeff can attest, Downey brought us about 100 applicants, and he finally recommended 10, and we picked four and interviewed them. And Gary was easily the most conversant on the situation in Paducah, and he still wanted the job, so that made us awful happy.
Right.
Well, I did tell Gary on the phone conversation that we had that I'm sure he was not a stranger to adversity, and that he would do well here.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
He was really nice, so friendly, so nice. I appreciate that.
All right.
I've got to pick Mark up in the air for him, he's flying back in, and he'll be leaving Saturday, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say hello out there to Max Housman. Max is here today. Do you want to come up and just briefly say what you're doing here today?
I am here to complete a citizenship in the community merit badge, to try to get my Eagle Scout. So I came here to interview somebody, and I already interviewed Mr. Abraham, so glad to come.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you guys for having me.
Learning more about how government works. Okay, we'll go on to our motions. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Certificates of liability insurance from Rem Stripping Company, Inc., deed of conveyance with Edith Brown for 342 Ashbrook Avenue, contracts and agreements, interlocal cooperation agreement with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the cooperative financing of an economic development project, Paducah Water Works financial statements and reports for November and December 2014, Paducah Junior College, Inc. financial report from August 2013 to December 2015, City of Paducah Department of Finance financial report for a period ending September 30th, 2014, City of Paducah Investment Summary Report for the Second Quarter of Fiscal Year 2015, Paducah-McCracken County 911 Consolidation Proposal, Kentucky State Police Dispatching Proposal presented to Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Communication Service Board, bids for engineering public works department, 2015 one-half-ton pickup truck for use by the fire department, Lynwood Motors, Paducah Ford.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Of course, the most significant thing on it is the hire of the four police officers. If you have any questions about that, or I believe you received bios about these, about these folks ahead of time.
Glad to see them onboard.
Still have some more openings, they're still, still working.
Okay, good.
Okay, great.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Harland Brazier in the amount of $300 for purchase of the real property located at 603 South 8th Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second.
This agenda item and the next one are directly adjacent to each other. These are two more surplus properties that we've owned since July of 2014, being transferred to a new property owner. The future use is most possibly a proposed residential land use, new house.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Harland Brazier in the amount of $300 for purchase of the real property located at 605 South 8th Street, and authorize the mayor to execute a deed for same be adopted.
Second.
It'd be nice to have a new house there.
Yes, at some point in the future, it would.
Yes. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under ordinances introduction, we do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance ratifying and approving the mayor's execution of a contract for a strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Peale and Holland Financial Group for administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby ratifies the execution of a contract for strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Peale and Holland Financial Group in the amount of $71,900 payable in four equal installments of $17,975 each for administration services pertaining to the administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or the city's legal counsel for issues that arise in connection with employer and employee bargaining, legal matters, disputes, or other similar issues. This contract is for the 2015 calendar year.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? On this exciting subject, which is very important, one of the important things that we have here in the.
We are the insurance company.
Right.
We are a partially, we have a partially self-funded plan, multimillion-dollar plan, and the very difficult compliance issues, and the strategic analysis of our data is all done by Peale and Holland for us. We meet, we meet John Perkins and I and Audra Herndon and the City Manager, we meet monthly with them and frequently, more often, for administering our program. So really, they provide a lot of services to us for that amount of money. It's not just Greg, it's described as Greg, but there is, it's not unusual for three or four other people or outside consultants that Peale and Holland will bring in to service our account.
And they do a fine job for us.
Do a very fine job, couldn't do it without them.
Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for sale to the City of one-half-ton full-size pickup and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Lynwood Motors in the amount, total amount of $31,246 for one-half-ton full-size pickup truck for use in the Fire Department Fire Prevention Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Rick?
Mayor Commission, this is a part of completing, moving forward on your 2015 fleet plan, this particular vehicle will be used in fire prevention as they perform their routine duties.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance repealing Article II, Property Assessment and Reassessment Moratorium of Chapter 106, Taxation of the Code of Ordinances, and recreating Chapter 106, Article II, establishing and approving the Downtown and Market House Historic District Assessment and Reassessment Moratorium for City of Paducah Taxes, and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to repeal Chapter 106, Article II of the Code of Ordinances and recreate Chapter 106, Article II, establishing the Downtown and Market House Historic District Assessment and Reassessment Moratorium for qualifying units of real property pursuant to KRS 99.595 through 99.605 and KRS 132.452 in order to encourage the repair, rehabilitation, restoration, or stabilization of existing real property in certain target areas of the City of Paducah.
Second.
Good evening again. This is, I guess, the third part of our downtown toolbox. We have the Upper Story Residential Program, the Roof Stabilization Program, and now this is a moratorium for people that want to rehab the structures downtown. It would be for five years, after the improvements are made, a reassessment of the property would happen, and then the taxation start from that point forward. But we're pretty excited about this, to be able to use this and to offer this in our downtown area with all the stabilization, revitalization that's getting ready to happen.
I notice it includes, were they, part of it must have some residential property with it?
It can be for residential or commercial.
Or it could be either one?
Yeah, as long as there's $75,000 worth of improvements.
Is it take effect when we vote on it, or will it be retroactive any?
No, when you vote on it. And then from that point forward, they have to make an application, after the application happens and is approved through the PVA office also, at that point, the moratorium happens for that piece of property.
Great. Steve, I really appreciate all the work that you've done to, I mean, you've come up with some great ideas, some innovative ideas to promote downtown and to make it more business-friendly, to bring more people downtown. You know, because I did open my big mouth when I first ran for mayor and said I wanted 500 people living downtown, so.
Certainly 50 more residents, but thank you.
What's that count?
Right now.
We have a good team, obviously Melinda's doing a very good job, and also the Main Street Board is providing guidance also, so I think we're moving in the right direction. Hopefully 2015 is going to be excellent, very successful.
You know, it's, it's pretty timely, the tools in your toolbox, because today, under became as they listed, you know, the problems they've had in Murray with fires and buildings collapse and the economic problems, and they've sort of given the tally of it. So this is, good to be proactive.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Okay.
Good one.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amends Chapter 126-76 sign regulation of Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to allow projecting signs in cases where buildings are within one foot of the property line for the B1 and B3 zones, to change the height and size for decoratory signage in various zones for commercial businesses, to allow for awning signs to be used, to be the same dimensions as wall signs in the B2 T-zone, and to allow awnings to be used as wall signs in the B1, B2, B3, M1, M2, M3, and HBD zones, and follow the same 20% requirement to add regulations for the A1 Civic Center Zone, and to clarify enforcement procedure.
Second.
Once a year or so, we keep a list of amendments that we think are worthy of bringing before the Commission. Some of these amendments, most of these amendments. Some of these amendments, most of these amendments are from property owners where they've requested signs, but these only ordinance would not allow them at that time. Quite often, they'll go to the board of adjustment and get a variance. It's staff's opinion, if the board of adjustment believes that these types of signs should be allowed, that the right thing to do is become before the commission, have those amendments made, so the next time a developer wants to do something, it's a use-by-ride, there's not that extra step to act, to go to the board of adjustment to get approval. So what you have before you is a list of those proposals for approval.
Thank you.
Explain to me, you know, buildings that are within one foot of the property line.
Yes. There's certain instances, right now, along Broadway and Kentucky, for instance, most of the broad, the structures are historic, they're located right on the right-of-way line. So if anybody wanted to have a perpendicular sign, it would act, it would have to stick over the sidewalk. Nowhere else in Paducah are they allowed. So what this does in certain areas with historic structures, if the building is located within one foot, it's an historic structure, most likely, that they have the option of having a perpendicular sign, even though it went over the, went over the right-of-way. They still have to meet all the requirements, along with that, as far as the height above the sidewalk, those types of things.
There's this coffee shop downtown that had to go to the board of adjustments, I remember that one pretty well, because it had a sign that flagged that perpendicular building over the sidewalk.
Sure.
Who was the proprietor of that, who was that?
I don't know, some, some reprobate.
Okay.
But, so this is, it was the board of adjustments, now it's just part of the deal.
That's correct.
Great.
Thank you for making it easier to do business, Steve.
Thank you.
Jeez.
Okay, city managers' report.
Public Works Director, City Engineer, Rick Murphy, has a new employee he'd like to introduce tonight.
Mayor Commission, I'm pleased to introduce Eric Hickman as a new recruit to Paducah. Mr. Hickman is a University of Louisville graduate from speed school up there, the engineering school up there. We won't hold that against him here in western Kentucky, because we're more blue than red here. There we go, for that. But has he served some employment time with MSD, which is Metropolitan Sewer District in Louisville? So he's familiar with these kind of projects, and also with OMU, which is the Owensboro Municipal Utility. And he's come to be our stormwater and drainage engineer in the Engineering Public Works Department, and we're, and I'm glad to have him, and we're glad to have him. So Eric, if you'd like to say a few things?
Yeah, I'm excited to be here, excited to give, give me the opportunity, excited to get back into stormwater, worked at a power plant in OMU, so, yeah, looking, looking to get back to my roots of stormwater and drainage that I did at MSD. So appreciate the opportunity for working with the city.
We have a lot here to keep you happy.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes. Four rivers and two lakes, so.
That's right.
There you go. Hope you paid attention, because there you go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, actually, actually Eric, Eric is a bass fisherman, and at U of L, he actually, I guess, won some tournaments, led some tournaments, created some tournaments, you know, so maybe we can get some type of collegiate bass tournament activity down here to bring something. So, you know, he's got some background there, too.
What time?
Don't always look at me when you talk about fishing tournaments.
Everybody does.
I was. Was.
I've never fished in my life, but I totally support it, and I'm very excited about it.
Oh, that's funny.
Thank you.
That's funny.
I look forward to hosting more fishing tournaments at our new rant.
There you go. That was your original statement.
I'd like to comment on a couple of things. Meetings last week with Greater Paducah Sustainability, as well as Republic, Inc. went very well with respect to the transitioning from one facility to the other, and the continued role of GPS in the community in the recycling effort going forward. So I was very encouraged by the meetings individually, and I'll be bringing both parties together to discuss between them what they might be able to do cooperatively going forward, so very encouraged about that. We're working on the staff level at, looking at site options for a prospective city hall build within the government plaza at the direction of the commission a couple of months ago. Happy to report that, I believe, the first workshop in March, we will be bringing something forward for you to look at. It will be a number of potential site options, probably six or seven, along with ratings based on eight or nine different criteria that are pertinent to this kind of thing. They're sort of industry-standard criteria that are obvious to use when you rate various locations for their suitability for something. And within a fairly contained area here, it's, it's a little less vigorous process than it might be on a broader scale. So the decision to look at siting within this government plaza really set more narrow parameters than if it had been done on a bigger scale, so it made the manageability of establishing criteria and rating much, much more straightforward. So we'll bring that forward for you to take a look at, and to critique, and to suggest any additional process to be put to it that you may want to have put to it. But this is a, an important step on the road to the next really big step, and that would be some form of commissioning, of some sort of design for what a build might look like in a particular location. So we're excited to be able to do that at the staff level without incurring additional professional or consulting fees up to that point. But that's probably about as far as we could take it at the staff level, before we do need to, to bring in professional outside services when we get into some kind of a design engagement, be it whatever level. So looking forward to that, the first week in March. We need to be back with you in another workshop in March as well, probably the second workshop to talk more about the curbside recycling option, and how that might look. Continue to ask you to visit with people, gain some feedback, develop thoughts of your own, share them with us ahead of that, so that we can be prepared to address any potential changes or different approaches to things from that which appeared in that presentation a number of weeks ago. So a lot of stuff going on. Number of us will be traveling to Frankfurt tomorrow for municipal day at the legislature. I'll be staying in Frankfurt for the rest of the week for the Kentucky City Management Association meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay, and I'll be traveling to Washington with Scott Darnell, with the PED, to the ECA conference, and that's an agribizzi group for all the Department of Energy sites around the country. This weekend, there's a lot going on. The Siemens Church is having an open house for their newly renovated facility, so I would encourage everyone to try to drop by there and see what they have going on. And I'm not sure about the time, do you know, Carol?
I do not.
I didn't know they were having that. There's one on the 26th as well.
Okay. And, well, maybe they gave me the wrong information. I know he said this weekend, though. Could have been the wrong information. This weekend or the 26th. So everyone have a wonderful Valentine's weekend, and give someone a hug. Meeting's adjourned.